Call the meeting in order. Please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the clerk call roll, please.
Counselor Bolin.
Here.
Counselor Elliott.
Here.
Counselor Fisher is absent this evening. Counselor Furlough.
Here.
Counselor Grizzle.
Here.
And Counselor Reese Camp.
Here.
Thank you. Approval of council minutes, March 9th, 2016, regular session minutes. Any corrections or additions?
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and proved, moved and seconded to approve the council minutes from March 9th. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? Council minutes passed. Consent calendar. Tonight is the agenda for April 13th and the board minutes from the planning commission, February 17th, 2016.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. Consent calendar is approved. First up, I have some proclamations.
Just a few.
Just, yes, bear with me. I do have my water tonight. City of Lebanon Arbor Day, Friday, April 29th, 2016. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed that a special day be set aside for planting of trees, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are renewable resource giving us paper, wood, paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other products, whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, Paul R. Aziz, Mayor of the City of Lebanon, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 29th, as Arbor Day in the City of Lebanon. I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day, support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and plant trees to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of this and future generations. And I believe that there is a tree planting on that day, I believe it is, that Friday, and I think it's at the senior center.
It's Thursday. I believe it's the Thursday the week before.
Before that?
And it's at the library.
Okay.
At 11, I believe.
I did see it on Facebook, I just don't remember the date, but thank you. Okay, next up, Mental Health Month proclamation. Whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and whereas all Americans experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives, and whereas there's a strong body of research that support user-friendly tools that all Americans can access to better handle challenges and protect their health and well-being, and whereas with effective treatment, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full productive lives, and whereas each and every one of us has a responsibility to promote mental health wellness and support prevention efforts. Now therefore, I, Paul R. Aziz, Mayor of Lebanon, proclaim May 2016 as Mental Health Month in Lebanon, and call upon the citizens of Lebanon to commit to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health, and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions. Do we have somebody here from a mental health organization that would like to speak?
This is Glyn.
Sure.
So my name is Catherine Henderson.
Can you come forward to the microphone?
So my name is Catherine Henderson, and I'm a...
You gotta play along.
Yeah.
I'm gonna sit down.
We want to hear you.
I was gonna be brief.
That's okay.
So my name is Catherine Henderson, and I'm actually a member of the Lynn County Mental Health Advisory Board, a citizen member. Shannon?
Shannon Percy. I recently joined Lynn County Alcohol and Drug, and then I'm also a member of the advisory board as well.
And we want to thank you for moving forward with this proclamation. Our goal in all of our work around mental health is to reduce the stigma. Many of you know that there is up to a 10-year delay in people seeking help from the time they first experience symptoms to the time they actually get the help that they need. We want to have people think of mental health challenges as every bit as valid and important as going to the doctor for any other type of illness or, you know, situation. We want people to get the help they need. We want for our people to recognize that it's not shameful. We did bring a bit of a... Yeah, this is a, we've started myths and, there's a lot of myths around mental illness. This is a campaign that we are moving forward, rolling out in Lynn County. We have posters and table tents that, this one says, "There's no hope for people," the myth, "there's no hope for people with mental health problems." The fact, recovery is possible. Today, there is more help available than ever before. And we have these, our table tents are in English and Spanish. We're also going to be, in just a couple months, addressing, rolling out our mental health first aid training. I think last year when I was here, I said it was going to be moving forward. It's been a little bit more slower than we had hoped, but we, Shannon, you want to give the particulars?
Yep, so I've been hired as the coordinator for that program, and so we will be rolling out, rolling it out across the county. I've actually made a partnership with the Boys and Girls Club, so they will be hosting classes at their location and other locations. One of the wonderful things about this training is the grant that we have for it is allowing it to be at no cost to anybody who wants to take it, and then we'll also be working with the school districts and other departments, like the police department, fire department, and youth serving organizations, to help train their staff alongside community members themselves, to just create a basic foundation for mental health first aid.
So our goal is to get as many people trained in mental health first aid. It's for laypeople, it's not for people who are already therapists. It's for us regular people. Go ahead, Mayor.
So is that to help people recognize signs and then get referrals and things like that?
Symptoms and symptoms, and also, so it teaches you, the biggest barrier for people intervening is that they don't know what to say.
Okay.
They don't know what to do. And this is a, one day, it's an eight-hour training, people receive a certification, but it really equips us to be better able to respond when we see or hear someone in distress, to be able to reach out to them.
Very good. I know our police department has to, has to deal with that a lot, and that's important.
We're excited about that. The other piece, just to mention that there are, so there's the adult training, we have a training specifically geared toward helping young people, and then we're also able to provide now an older adult training, because many of us have parents and other members of our community that we, we know that there's a high rate of depression in that community.
Well, yes, and I spoke about this last year, and I will continue to champion this as a mental health professional for a number of years. This also provides a tremendous resource for our community in times of disasters. It provides a core people, neighbors, be able to respond to your neighbors, your family members, or to assist in any kind of a small or large disaster that might come upon the community. So this, this really is a, is a tremendous resource. I mean, it's, it's, you know, on the, on the par of a neighborhood watch program, being that effective and that crucial as a part of the infrastructure that any community should have.
So we've trained about 900 people in the Albany area, and now we're starting, moving out in the rural communities, and so we hope to have a wide number, wide range of people trained before too long.
Where will your classes be held in Lynn County?
Well, in town, they'll be at the Boys and Girls Club. I'm going to be meeting with people at the library to be able to see if they'll be a host site. If any of you know of other, we need a place that allows for, it's a get up, it's an active curriculum, it's not just sitting in your chair all day, so we need a little bit of extra space. So we're very happy to go wherever, you know, if there's a, whoever you know that a place that would be good, we're happy to hear that, so.
And that is East Lynn County, all over Lynn County.
All Lynn County is our target area.
The entire county, and so part of our goal is to make sure that there's an even distribution of it, and so we're looking at all of the different areas, which is why, you know, the Boys and Girls Club of Greater Siam is a good way to hit the Lebanon sweet home and rural area community. We also hold classes at LBCC, we have one this month and next month. It's just a general location for community members from all over. I have people coming down from Salem and then from Benton County as well coming to join it. So we're really trying to not only host it in the larger city of Albany, but then outreach to everywhere else so that you don't have to, you know, drive a half an hour to get there.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Very good. Well, thank you for your work, and thank you for taking time to come out tonight. Appreciate it.
All the specific information, once we get dates and times and everything, so you can begin to think about who you can send to the trainings, okay?
Very good, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, all of you. We appreciate it.
Next up is Older Americans Month proclamation. Whereas Lebanon includes a community of older Americans who deserve recognition for their contributions to our nation, and whereas Lebanon recognizes that older adults are trailblazers blazing the way for future generations by advocating for themselves, their peers, their communities, and whereas Lebanon is committed to raising awareness about issues facing older Americans and helping all individuals to thrive, and whereas we provide, or we appreciate the value of inclusion and support in helping older adults successfully contribute to and benefit from their communities, and whereas our community can provide opportunities to enrich the lives of individuals, young and old, by helping older adults take control of their safety and well-being. Now therefore, I, Paul R. Aziz, Mayor of Lebanon, hereby proclaim May 2016 to be Older Americans Month. I urge every resident to take time this month to recognize older adults and the people who serve and support them as powerful and vital individuals who greatly contribute to the community of Lebanon. And I have to say, I'm proud of our senior center and the work that, that they do, and every time I go there, it's, it's, it's a fun experience because the people there are great, and it seems like we always celebrate older Americans, but it's a nice month to recognize. And lastly, we have Celebrate Service. It's National Volunteer Week. Whereas the entire community can inspire, equip, and mobilize people to take action and changes to the world, and whereas individuals and communities are at the center of social change, discovering their power to make a difference, and whereas during this week, all over the nation, service projects will be performed and volunteers recognized for their commitment to service, and whereas the giving of oneself in service to another empowers the giver and the recipient, and whereas experience teaches us that government by itself cannot solve all of our nation's social problems, and whereas our country's volunteer force of more than 63 million is a great treasure and vital to our future as a caring and productive nation. Now therefore, I, Mayor Paul R. Aziz, hereby proclaim April 10th through the 16th, 2016, as National Volunteer Week in the City of Lebanon, and urge my fellow citizens to volunteer in their respective communities. By volunteering and recognizing those who serve, we can come together to make a difference. And last weekend was a great example of the volunteers that we have in our community at the Walk for the Child Abuse. I mean, there were just, the fire department was there, there were citizen volunteers, it was just tons to put the event together where there's 250 people, I think it was, that were walking. It was a huge event, and it's just, our whole community has got a spirit of volunteerism, so it's pretty exciting. Okay. Next up, we have public comments. The council welcomes all respectful comments during the city's business. Citizens may address the council by approaching the microphones, signing in, stating their name and address for the record. Each citizen is provided up to five minutes to provide comments to the council. The council may take an additional two minutes to respond. The city clerk will accept and distribute written comments at a speaker's request. And I have one person signed up so far, and that is Glyn. Would you like to come up and address council?
I think I'll wait till that, yeah.
Okay. Anyone else would like to address council on anything on the agenda? Or otherwise?
I can sign up right there.
Okay. You can sign in right there on the sheet. And what was your name?
Mike Clayton.
Okay.
I'm in Ward 2, and residential. And I was hoping that I could get the council interested in granting a variance on whatever ordinance covers 40-foot shipping containers in residential areas. I called about it, and I couldn't find anybody that had ever run across a shipping container this size being put in a residential backyard. I was hoping that we could establish some variance that does not allow a 40-foot shipping container, that the storage area should be based on square footage of the yard. There should be some, some means of limiting the size of a shipping container. I mean, this, this shipping container, it covers almost the entire yard. It is a horrendous eyesore, and I can't imagine any reason for its existence.
It's currently still up on wheels, and so it sticks up seven or eight feet above. What is your fence? Six-foot fence? A six-foot fence, so every neighbor from all four sides has a view of a, you know...
Algae-covered shipping container.
Yeah.
It's in excess of 240 square feet.
We've all worked on our houses to clean them up, and our yards and everything, and this is just, you know, it, it affects the price of the house, it affects the whole neighborhood. It looks like a salvage yard.
It appears that it might be eight foot by 40 foot.
Yes. It's huge, it's a shipping container.
I drove by it, because I did get your email, and I drove by there just on my way this evening, and you're right, it is, it is hideous.
A horrible eyesore.
I know. I, I had, there's a delicate balance for me, because what if it was a 40-foot trailer? Because I could put a 40-foot really hideous trailer in my backyard, and I've actually had neighbors who've done that, and so it's a delicate balance between what I can keep in my backyard and, and it is unattractive to my neighbors, because I, I've been there. Nothing near as hideous, I'll grant you that. That is really bad, and it is very tall, so I, I'm just not sure what to do.
Well, I think there should be some, I've, I've looked in other cases, and people are doing, putting restrictions on size. I mean, it's a part of being in a residential area. I mean, you bought a house in a residential area not to put a 40-foot shipping container in the backyard. It makes no sense.
Have you spoken to Walt from the planning department?
Yes, he doesn't seem to, it's, it's sort of a gray balance right now, because it's still on wheels.
Okay.
So it becomes a vehicle, but the owner wants to put it on the ground and make it a woodworking workshop, in which case it would be a building, but right now it's still on wheels, so it doesn't fall into the storage that permits to run electric and all of your other rules, because it's still mobile, but...
And apparently, if he wanted to pull another one in there, that'd be fine, too. As long as he can wheel it in, he can keep it. It, it makes no sense to me, it's just...
It just doesn't seem like inside of a residential tract that there ought to be, that you can put shipping containers. That's, you know, that would, seems like that would be in an industrial park. I don't, if it's zoned to be a residential, it shouldn't be zoned to be a, to be boats, I would say.
It's a commercial object, basically. It's not a residential object. Which gets back to the, the point you made, ma'am, about another trailer. A trailer that is intended to be a residential structure is very different aesthetically in most cases, granted, there would be exceptions. But in general, aesthetically, a residential trailer has a different aesthetic than a commercial shipping object.
Yeah, and I, I think a lot of, a lot of people I have seen use these containers in their backyards as storage. I saw two moved in, in a different property today to be used as storage facilities.
Residential areas?
And they're right next to the people's...
It is a, yeah, so I'm, I'm just not sure. I'm, I'm wondering what other cities do, if they, if...
Well, what I saw, they, they put restrictions on the size based on square footage of the yard.
Do they?
Gary?
This is the first I've heard of it, but what I would like to have an opportunity to do is to, to talk with Walt Windolowski about how our code approaches this or doesn't, maybe look at what other communities have done, and perhaps report back to the council with some ideas about how this might be approached. Right now, I'm, I'm not prepared, but certainly, we could come back with information.
I think that's a good idea.
I'm dealing with the same thing. The city council in Arizona is arguing over, too.
We're just researching who's doing what about it. We don't know anyone in Arizona who has that problem, but, yeah.
Well, we appreciate you coming to us, and we will take a look at it, and then have, have the staff get back to you.
And if anyone, you know, to volunteer to have their backyard, you know. We'd be happy to have him move it over to any of you guys' yards.
Mayor, you're literally half a block from us.
Yeah, you're right on the other side of the street from us.
What, what street is it on?
I'm on 221 East Sherman.
Oh.
The house that I purchased was empty for four years.
Oh, okay.
I have made improvements. I put up a fence, and, and wanted to live there, and put roots down. My property value, I can't look out my window daily without seeing this algae-covered behemoth, and I don't see it being an improvement if he lowers it four feet and takes it off of a trailer. It's still...
Well, he was talking about he could put a tarp over it.
That would look worse.
A blue tarp, because that will blend.
Okay, your time?
Another part of the trailer is that they're treated with pesticides inside and chemicals on the outside, so if you don't give them a variance, there should be some treatment of these things. If people are going to put them in their yard, there should have to pass some sort of code on pesticides inside and chemicals on the outside.
Okay, we will, we'll have staff look into this, and we'll get, get back to us and to you.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming forward.
Yeah.
Lisa?
Lisa, can I have your sign as well?
Yes.
I thought about one of those for my Christmas lights. Maybe not.
They're pretty popular.
I think not.
Yeah.
But you don't have to get them that big, I...
Get have storage.
Yeah.
Does anyone else like to address council?
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Blair Elzinga, and I'm a scout master of Troop 340, which is, calls Lebanon, Oregon, its home, and I brought a troop of scouts with me here tonight to experience government firsthand, and just wanted to let you know that we're here, and appreciate being able to be here, and let you know that the scouts embrace service. We've done several projects here in the city that have benefited the, the whole community, and we just wanted to say hi.
We'll try to be on our best behavior.
Thank you for coming, guys. Is Troop 340 the troop that I spoke at earlier this year? I came and spoke to, to a group. Oh, that was, okay. Okay. Very good.
Different age group.
All right, yep, thank you.
Thank you.
It was 340, okay, I thought so. I didn't recognize the numbers. Anyone else? Okay, see none, we'll move on. Oops, sorry. Didn't see you.
I was just waiting to see if anybody else was there. Tony Adams, Vine Street. I just had a quick comment, one, I wanted to respond to the, the people that were up here before about the shipping container in the backyard. I understand that there's lots of things that go into people's backyards that, that neighbors around get really upset about because it...
Hold on a second.
He's counting against my five minutes, right?
Yeah, I, actually.
It's a long one.
Yeah. All right, why don't you go ahead?
Okay, so, um, I understand that there's things like that in neighborhoods, and they, you know, they, they cause issues with neighbors sometimes, but I really don't feel that putting more regulations on what people can do in their backyard and have in their backyard is something we should really be doing right now. I think that we have so many regulations on how high our bushes can be, and how big our fences, and, and everything that, you know, let people have their backyards, and if, and if you have something that you can see, plant your bush up a little bit higher, or volunteer to paint it, or something. If you don't like the way it looks, it's not in your yard, you know, there's other things that can be done rather than creating a law to, to change it and make everybody, because there's lots of things around in people's backyard that, once we open up that can, it's just going to blow up, and there's going to be so many people coming in here, "Well, we need a law for this, we need a law for this, we need..." And I just think that maybe we should stop making all sorts of laws regulating those kind of things. That's just my opinion. The other thing I just wanted to bring up, I know you guys are doing a water rate increase, and I know it's for inflation, and I just wanted to make sure that, that there was actually, you know, the, the expenses involved in the utilities are actually such where it would require that increase even though inflation is going up? Is it just a, "Oh, inflation's going up, let's raise the water rates," or did, were the expenses looked at to determine if the expenses are going up that much and require that increase, or is it just, "Oh, this is just our annual inflation, let's just go ahead and raise the rates because we can, because inflation went up?" So I don't know what the process was involved, and just looking at, water rates are so sensitive in this town right now, so is, as much backup as we can to make sure that the expenses are shown as needing to have that increase, that would be great, you know, if, if inflation goes up 3.1%, but the expenses are only going up 1.5%, maybe we don't need the full 3%. Maybe we can get by with the 1.5% or whatever. I just wanted to make that comment so that, because they're so sensitive, and everybody's so upset about all the water rates, and that there's nothing that they feel that can be done, so that's my comment on, on that, just to make sure they're comparable there.
Thank you. Our, our engineer, when he goes over that, he's got it pretty well detailed in the packet I saw, of what the reasons for it are, so that'll be explained when that comes up.
Okay.
Thank you, though. Anyone else?
I reclaim my time for just a second.
Sure.
Just wanted to speak in support of what she was saying about minimizing the amount of regulation and government. My name is Glenn Ufford, and I'm signed in up there, that the, the larger the city gets, the more you have these types of problems and so forth, and that's the reason, one of the reasons why I keep arguing for keeping the city small. You know, there's, that was asked for in the, the people that were interviewed, that was one of the issues that came up, and it, as it was written down, it became small-town values, not small-town, and I'm thinking small-town with growing, you know, as you have to, as people, as the economy brings businesses in, then you have growth, but you don't have to go out and bribe them to come in. That's, thank you.
I want to say just briefly that I, I agree with both of you on that issue. I'm, I'm very slow to, I, I'm, I'm sensitive to the fact that it's a hideous container. I went by there, I can verify that, but I can keep something hideous in my backyard, and it's my backyard, and if you have to look at it. So it, that's why I said it's a delicate balance. I'm very sensitive to that, so I will be paying attention to that as we move forward.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Okay, next up, we will move into the public, I'm sorry, the Strategic Action Plan. Yeah. Gary Marks.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of our community. I, I want to start off in an unlikely place. Back in 1994, there was a movie came out called Forrest Gump, and in that movie, the, the main star is Tom Hanks, and he plays a gentleman with a very unique personality, whose name is Forrest Gump, and in the opening scene, he's sitting on a park bench, and he has a box of chocolates on his lap, and he makes the statement, "Life is like a box of chocolates. You never know what you'll get." And I want to relate that to communities. I've managed a number of communities in my career, and coming here, I was hopeful to be able to do some things different in the way I managed the city. And it started in, in 2012, when I was still the city manager in Ketchum, Idaho, a native Oregonian, living out of, out of my own native area, and feeling a desire to come back home, and knowing that at my age, that, that I wanted to find a community where I could settle in and manage until I could perhaps retire and have a good, long run, and do things, like I said, a little bit differently. And going back to Mr. Gump's statement, every community I've gone to has been unique, special in its own way, and the way you manage each community has to be tailored to their uniqueness, and to do that, you really have to know what you're dealing with. And so when I was thinking about making the, the... dealing with. And so when I was thinking about making the move and trying to find a new, new community to move to in Oregon, I was thinking that I would like to do something different in the way of how I started the job. And that is, I wanted to, I wanted to have a vision process where I could establish a direction with my city council for the community that was based on what the community truly felt they wanted and a direction that they desired and something that they felt like they owned. And so that was one of my criteria. When I came to interview here, I was excited to come to Lebanon because it was a community that although I'd never really had a lot of experience with, growing up in Oregon, I certainly had been here before and was at least mildly familiar with the community. So when, when Counselor Fisher asked me the question, "If we hire you as your city manager, what's your vision for our community?" And that was the $64,000 question that I hoped someone would ask. And Floyd did. And it was, gave me the chance to say, "Well, you know, if you expect me, not knowing your community, to come here and tell you right now what my vision is for you, then please don't hire me. Run away." What we need to do is we need to have a vision that points us in a direction that is meaningful and fits the community of Lebanon. So with that, we've, we've launched into this process that began in, well, for me, it started in the summer of 2014, starting to look at how we would structure the process and putting together the RFP for our first consultant engagement. And launching, we launched the project in, I believe it was November of 2014, went through the visioning process, established our vision, which is up here on the wall now with our seven focus areas. And then we came back after the council adopted that last June, we came back and in January, started our strategic plan process. Where that took us to is from these seven focus areas, the task force that this council appointed, identified through community input and community interaction surveys, the community town hall that we had, we identified 17 strategies that we wanted to pursue. And around those 17 strategies, there are 77 action plans. Notice the word "seven" comes in here often. That's an accident. But anyway, I like to think that's the perfect number, so maybe we're getting something right. So I don't want to say a whole lot more because we have some folks here. Tom Oliver, who is our task force chair, who's done a fantastic job along with the task force, several members of the task force are here. I know they're not going to be speaking, but we want to recognize their hard work throughout these last several months. Also Eric Jensen, our consultant is here and I believe both Tom and Eric are prepared to address us, to inform the council about this process we've been through. And when they wrap up, I'm going to make my recommendation for your approval of the plan. So Tom and Eric, if you're ready, please come up.
Thank you, Gary. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'd like to start off by recognizing the members of the task force and many of them are here today. So I'm going to read your names and I'd ask you to each stand. Shelley, you can wave, stand.
Kristin.
So, thanks. And if you can't tell, we had a lot of fun doing this. So we'll try to contain the humor as we work through this. But Sarah Brown, Phil Fletcher, Shelley Garrett, Kristen Hyde, Deila Johnson, Wyatt King, Lynn Cohen, Chris Latimer, Jennifer Meckley, Sean Minor, Ian Rollins, and Michelle Steinhebel. And I'd also be remiss if I didn't mention Jim McDaniel, who was appointed to the task force and was not physically able to be with us during the process. But I think I speak for the group when I say he was certainly part of the process as we went through it. You know, this process to me was particularly interesting. I've been through a number of strategic planning processes. In fact, several of them were involved with some of you sitting at this table. That's a routine thing for a city to do. And I believe you as a council still set goals every year and staff provides recommendation. And I think pretty much every city everywhere does something like that. But when the opportunity came up to be involved in this process, I was really pleased to have the opportunity to participate because this is really different than anything I had witnessed before with this city in that this really was a community plan and there was a lot of community involvement. You know, every council meeting and between meetings, all of you have the opportunity to interact with members of the public and you hear feedback from people sitting in this chair, from people calling you. And that's part of the process. But what oftentimes maybe doesn't occur as much is the opportunity for those citizens to maybe give you bigger picture ideas on things they want to see in the community. You know, most times somebody has an issue and they come to council to get it resolved. But this was an opportunity to ask the community, "What do you want to be? What do you want to see? What should the priorities for this city, this organization, this community be from now till 2040 and how are we going to get there?" So, you know, this plan is, again, very different from other strategic plans that you've adopted in that it doesn't focus primarily or only on city services. Certainly, parts of the plan touch on public safety, on economic and community development. But there's also a much broader scope that folds into the fabric of the community with arts and culture, education, opportunities for the youth of the community. And in some way, shape, or form, all of those items that are seemingly not direct city activities fold back into city functions, into making this community work. You know, if, you can't have economic development if you don't have a workforce and that starts with the youth and having the opportunities for them and wanting them to stay here in town. So I think it's important as we look at that plan, not to think, "Oh, okay, the city has to fund all these things and we have to figure out how to do this on our own." It's a community plan that has identified community partners that are going to help. So when you take action and you think about how that relates to the plan, it doesn't necessarily mean we need to tap the general fund for this. It means, hey, who do we need to talk to? Who can we be supporting as they work on this piece that supports our plan and those seven values that have been prominently posted on the walls in here? So one of the really interesting things, we had a pretty diverse group on the committee and we had a lot of fun working through this process. We certainly spent a lot of time and a lot of energy doing so. And then we put it out there to the public at this community meeting, which had fantastic turnout. And we got, by and large, the feedback we received during that process and from the citizens that joined us at each of the workshops were in agreement, "Hey, these are the things we need to be talking about." And there certainly wasn't 100% agreement. And a lot of the things that the group struggled with as we tried to develop this plan were the same things that when we published the first draft and the community had the chance to really give some input, were the items that maybe were not contentious, but certainly warranted more discussion. So that was, again, you know, while there wasn't complete agreement, there was an overwhelming amount. And the items that were difficult for the community members that weren't on the panel were also the items that were difficult for us. So I think with that, I'm going to turn it over to Eric to maybe talk some of the nuts and bolts about how we got here and what the plan looks like.
All right. Thank you, Tom. For the record, Eric Jensen with Jensen Strategies. And first of all, let me just say, it has been absolute honor to be able to work with you and your community on this visioning, this community strategic action planning process. And I, just to give you a little bit of background, I know some of you know already, we do consulting work around the state, doing visioning, doing strategic planning. I also teach visioning and strategic planning for the League of Oregon Cities. And I have to say that working with this community was one of the experiences that stood out among many of the experiences that we've had. In large part because of the earnestness and the constructive approach and the intent of really wanting to do the best thing for the community came through in a trifecta. And what I mean by a trifecta is council, staff, and community all came forward with this attitude. And it really, when you look at that plan and you look at what came out of it, you really see how that was true. And so, you know, congratulations on having a great community strategic plan and also on the vision. I also wanted to just say upfront that we really enjoyed working with your staff. Gary has been an absolute pleasure to work with as has Lee and Linda. And we just, we really have enjoyed working with everybody. So the process itself, I'm not going to take you through a blow-by-blow on this, but the intent was, as Tom pointed out, to really get the community's input and to build the strategic plan off of that community input. And that happened. And it happened in spades. We, not only was the task force engaged, but there were community surveys that went out. There was a very heavily attended, well-attended, community forum and that had a lot of participation from the community. And even at the task force meetings, we would have regular attendance from members of the community who came to listen and also to share some of their ideas at the task force meetings. So it really was a process that engaged the community. The task force itself was absolutely outstanding in my personal experience. Great group of folks, loved working with everybody, great sense of humor and, but very, very creative. And also had, frankly, great attendance. And I have to say, that's not always the case. So bravo for that. But not only sitting at the table, but participating and engaging. As Tom indicated, there was a lot of back-and-forth. But the task force moved forward with what they believed was the best for the community, but more importantly, based on the input that was being, that was received from the community. And built on the vision that you had come up with before. So the other part that was, that was great is the willingness of partners to step up to the plate. Tom pointed out that this is not a plan that is for the city to implement as the only entity in the community. But rather, it is being implemented by a number of different community partners. And so there were a lot of ASKS, A-S-K-S, that were made of community organizations. And to step up to the plate and take ownership of those action items. And not one of those organizations said no. And I've been in other visioning or strategic planning processes where they have, they have said no. And said, "No, we're not going to participate." And that just said, I'm going back to the point of what I was saying earlier about your community and how great your community is. And there was a lot of creative thinking that went into it. And I want to call out one of my favorite actions. And that is, if you've read through it, there is an action in there to restore a Native, American Native totem pole. And I like that action from a number of standpoints. One was just from the historical standpoint of bringing that back to your community. But I also liked it because it is, in my experience, the only time in one of these planning processes where one single individual has stepped up to the plate and said, "I will solely take responsibility for moving this particular action forward." Usually, it's a, it's an organization. And that person is your city manager, Gary Marks. So I'm making a public request now that, to be invited to the inauguration or to the celebration around the totem pole. Love to see that when it's done. So, but I'd like to end this by talking about visioning and strategic planning success factors. Because in my class, I teach that there are five success factors and you folks have hit all five. The first is stakeholder involvement. That you have stakeholder involvement that's broad, that's meaningful, and it's impactful. And you had that. And what you have on, in that plan and as well as there is built off of that, is built off of what the community wanted. That the plan has connectivity. And what I mean by that is that you can look at any action on that plan and you can trace it back up to a statement that's on, that's on your, your vision statement and your focus areas. And that is one of the strengths of a plan like that. It's the backbone that keeps it together. The third is flexibility. And that is the ability to be able to make changes along the way without impacting the integrity of the plan. And the way that the plan's been worded and the way that it's been structured will allow for that to be modified, but without, without impacting the integrity of all this community engagement that you've had. Leadership, the council has been fantastically supportive, the staff and the community leaders here. And that leadership is key in terms of being able to move this forward. And then finally is implementation. The fact that you have an action plan that's structured in a way that allows organizations in your community and members of your community to be accountable for moving it forward is important. A lot of plans, as you know, sit on the shelf and you go through the process of, of going through a planning process and think, "Well, that's all done and we put it on a shelf and it gathers dust." Yours, I don't believe will. And, but I will say in closing that that will be the important part for you as a council, that you continue to keep this plan on the forefront and that the community keeps this on the forefront to make it a reality and to move it forward. And I have, that'll make or break its success and I have no doubt in my mind that you're going to do that. So thank you very much. It's been a pleasure working with all of you.
Thank you, Eric. Thank you, Tom.
Mr. Mayor and council, first of all, I want to thank Eric and Tom for their comments. I want to thank each and every one of the task force members. Many of them are here tonight. It's all possible because of them. Going forward, the council can expect, as a matter of routine now as you get your council packets, that many of the staff reports will make reference to how different items that you're dealing with tie into the strategic plan, how we're going forward with those. When you see the budget that comes out here, I think it's in the next month or so, we get together to talk about it. In my budget message that I put together with Dean, you'll see delineated several of the action plans that are in the strategic plan that are being prepared to be implemented through this next budget. So I'm excited to move forward, knowing that we have the validity of our community behind us in so many different ways throughout this plan. I know probably it's not a scientific way of looking at all that we did, but I wanted to kind of illustrate the level of community support we had with this plan. And through the surveying we did and the community... And through the surveying we did and the community workshop that we did on February 4th, where they had the real-time voting devices, we were able to put together some pretty impressive voting results on the, at the time, there were 20 strategies. We whittled that down afterwards to 17. But each of those 20 strategies was voted on, either through the survey or through the workshop. And those numbers were totaled together. If you take the average of all of those tallies, on average, 78% of the respondents said that they either supported or strongly supported the strategy. Now, the, those who disagreed or strongly disagreed were much less than that. It was 8% were people who identified themselves as they just didn't agree with, on average, with any of those strategies. And the rest, the 14%, represented people who had no opinion. So I think, you know, that's, that comes out to about a 10 to 1 ratio. For any community in American society today, to be able to have a plan where you, you tested it with your community and you've got this 10 to 1 ratio of people who think we're on the right track, boy, I think we're on the right track. So with that, I want to extend to the council my strongest possible recommendation that you approve this plan and give us the direction to begin to move forward implementing it. I will say, I don't know, it's been said here publicly tonight, it is a five-year plan. The vision looks out to 2040. This is a five-year plan with the intent that probably along year four or so, we'll begin planning the next five years. So we're taking this in chunks, and when that four-year interval comes, we'll probably need to make some adjustments to the overall plan and perhaps even the vision as the community grows and changes. So, but with what we have here before us for this five-year plan, I want to extend my strongest possible recommendation. And then just a caveat to acknowledge the fact that the council did task the task force with one additional duty, and that was to look at our community's logo. I want you to note the task force, having completed its work on, on the plan, met last week and had an initial discussion about that. They've generated some thematic ideas that they'd like to work towards the creation of a new image. So you can anticipate that at a subsequent meeting sometime here in the near future, I think Tom and maybe others from the task force will be back to address the logo issue. But I wanted to give you that update. But for now, I would recommend that you approve the plan.
Comments from councilors?
I'm just grateful for everyone that participated. The community members, the task force, and everyone in the consultant firm that came down. It was a great experience all around, and this is the kind of stuff that I think our community expects of us. And I'm excited to push this forward. Thank you to everyone that was a part of this.
I had a, I was at the Biz Expo all day, 10 hours, 12 hours, I don't know how long that was yesterday. Sitting there talking and people coming up to my booth, and they talked about my computer repair business, but they were talking mayor stuff too, because it's a great place to talk. And I had a lady come up and she said, "I'm just not sure about that vision thing." And I said, "You're not sure?" She said, "Yeah, I'm just not sure about it." And I said, "Well, what don't you like about it?" "I don't know. I'm just not sure about it." And I said, "Well, is there something specific?" "I just don't think it's going to be anything that does anything." And so then I started explaining to her, I said, "Well, you know, in the past, in my opinion, the cities put out fires. We've put out fires for things. We've had something come up, we've had to pay for it. We've had this happen and we've had to pay for it. And maybe we have a year out, we planned some things. But with a vision, we actually have a goal. We have, we have, this is what we want, this is what we want our community to be like. And then with a strategic plan, we have a way to follow through and to meet those goals." And I started explaining about it, and I talked about maybe our water plant, that maybe if we would have planned better, that the water plant would have been such an emergency. And I think there's a lot of important things. And by the time I was done, she was actually, "Wow, that sounds like that's really a good idea." Because we all know that putting out the fires is not the way to run a business, not the way to run a city. And, well, yeah, sorry, Jason. Some people's careers are dependent upon putting out fires. But using that analogy, and I think it's great, thank you so much to the whole group that participated both in the vision process and then you guys who did the strategic plan. I know there was a lot of late-night meetings. And Eric, your job, Tom, and I just appreciate the staff working with everybody too. And it's neat to hear someone, and I'll call you an outsider, Eric, an outsider from our community coming in and saying how well our community works together. What's fascinating is that just verifies all the things on the vision process that came out. So, I'm excited about it. I think you did a great job, Gary, in leading the, leading the charge, and thank you.
I also, go ahead, Bob.
I think one of the things that was very important to me, and I remember talking with you and Gary in the very beginning of this process, is to make sure that it really was a robust and all-inclusive for our community. And it was not just the usual people and the ones that are vocal and/or the ones that are prominent, that, that are listened to and that, at the exclusion of the general public. And that did not happen. When you, when you look at the number of participants, and we talked about that a number of times during the visioning process, to make sure that we were reaching out and providing a number of venues where the community as a whole could step up and be a part of it. And that, that businesses and the community members and organizations could all have a voice at the table. And I think the consultant and Gary have done a commendable job to make sure that that was held to and, and I think is the result of the quality of the product now.
How come you said everything I wanted to say? No, I have been through many of strategic plans and, you know, I'd just like to go back to the very beginning when Floyd Fisher asked the question of Gary. You know, I was, you know, sort of set back by the fact that Gary's response. And we are so fortunate that we made the decision to hire Gary as our city manager with the vision that he had about coming to a new place. But, you know, the, the leadership that went into this and those that participated, I thought was extremely dedicated and a lot of thought process was given. I haven't seen anything to that degree in this community, and I came here in 1968 and probably this, one of the senior members on this council. I'm just totally excited with the information that the community brought to us and that the diligence that the task force put in to create this for us. And I, I'm ready to make a decision.
Do you have any?
Good to go.
Okay. Bob, did you have any comments? On the task, did you have any comments on the task force?
No, I think it's an overrated, we might as well go ahead and improve it.
Okay.
I appreciate all the work that's gone into it.
Okay.
I think we might as well move on. I agree with that lady that talked to you. Let's don't let it die, let's keep it moving.
Okay. Okay, we'll have a motion.
I move we adopt the Lebanon 2040 Vision and Community Strategic Action Plan.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the strategic action plan adoption. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The strategic, strategic action plan is passed. Thanks again for all your work, we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we have a public hearing. Good evening, my name is Paul Aziz. I'm the mayor of Lebanon, I'll be presiding over this hearing. This is the time and the place set for the public hearing in the matter of planning file number 16-01-04, an application by the city of Lebanon to amend the city's development code. This hearing is now open. I need to ask the audience if there are any objections to the notice that was sent in the case of the jurisdiction of this body to hear and consider this case. Okay, seeing none. Are there any declarations of ex parte contact, conflict, or bias by any members of the council? Seeing none. With that out of the way, we're ready for the staff report. Walt.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. As you recall, I think you had a discussion about the issue of temporary uses in businesses last December. I was asked to come back with a report, sort of outlining some of the issues and providing some suggestions. We met again in January, and we had a pretty good discussion in terms of outlining the issues. And I think at that time, there were four major areas of concern. One was to limit some of the area or square footage of these temporary uses. Also, to limit the duration, if you will. Also, limit the number of vendors on an individual property. But also to open up the regulations with regard to food vendors. This is an opportunity to, I think, follow up on very much a current trend and I think provide some options. We took this information to the planning commission in February, we conducted a work session. From there, we had our public hearing in March. In your packet tonight, you have a staff report that sort of summarizes the material. You have an adoption ordinance, and attached to the adoption ordinance is a set of findings that goes through the details of conformance with our code, but also outlines sort of how we got where we are right now. I think I could summarize this by noting there are three basic sections that are discussed. The first thing that we looked at were tree and fireworks sales. There are no major changes to the requirements. If anything, what we did is just consolidated the material. It's going to make it easier for the vendor and also staff to follow through with that. So again, no significant changes except for some wordsmithing, if you will. The second group of activities would be commercial activities. These are non-food type of activities. We have made three major changes in this area. Again, consolidated the material, and there's some kind of overlap with the idea you can't take away required parking, you have to make sure the driveway entrances are left open and that sort of thing. But what we did is that we limited commercial activities to no more than 90 days within a calendar year. Currently, the regulations allow 90 days in one site, you move to another site for 90, and so forth. Second thing we did was limit the allowable area to 300 square feet that the business can occupy. This is about the equivalent of two parking spaces. So that kind of covers that. And finally, we simply limited to no more than one per property and gave a rather, I think, open view of how we look at property. It's not just a tax lot or an address or property ownership. It tries to be a little bit more inclusive. I think the big change, though, came down to the food vendors. Again, I want to stress that we've never prohibited a food vendor. We've always allowed these. But now, we've, as you suggested, kind of opened up the regulations a bit. Currently, again, everyone would have the 90 days. However, with this change, we are extending the permit process from 90 to 180 days for a food vendor. And they may continually, in perpetuity, if you will, get a renewal. As long as the property owner is signing off on the application and they're satisfied with how they're being operated, they may continue at that site. Also, unlike commercial activities, you can have a concentration of food vendors. So it's quite possible to have four or five food carts within an area. Now again, they can't take away required parking, they can't block driveways, you know, those sorts of things still apply, but you still have this potential for a concentration of food vendors. The other major change is that we required a proof of health certification from Lynn County. Normally, we do these, but, well, actually, we don't. We leave it up to the applicant to make sure they have all their other permits, because frankly, you never know what's required out there. As one lady noted, we have so many rules and regulations, we can't keep up with some of them in terms of some of these activities. But we require that their food cart or food truck or food van, whatever, does have a health certificate from Lynn County. As I noted, there is the ordinance and also findings here. I will note for the record, the Department of Land Conservation and Development, which were required to notify, had no comments or issues on this. We conducted the public hearing, there was no comments or letters in opposition. So with that, it's certainly the recommendation of the planning commission that the city council approve the amendments to the Lebanon Development Code. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Questions from councilors?
Thank you all.
Yeah, and I appreciate all the work that the planning commission and you did, because it's, we, we had a request and you guys really went out and did it. It's just great. It's really what I was looking for.
Me too.
Very, very well done. Well, thank you very much. I will certainly pass that word on to the commission.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, at this time, proponents of the legislation that we're talking about, the bill here, can come up and speak now. Anyone would like to speak in favor of this ordinance?
Glenn Offerd again. And I think it's really a step in the right direction. You know, one of the things I noted when we were having this visioning process is that you had a board put up there and people expressed what they wanted. It seemed like at least half, to my view of it, at least half and maybe three-fourths of it was, they wanted a different, such-and-such a restaurant, this food, that food. And, you know, these food carts are one way of getting that variety. I know I like it. My, when I go to Corning, California, first stop I make is down at that taco stand, Scott the Best Tacos in the World. You had one here that kind of made a substitute, and I kind of liked it, but I never could find it, because every 90 days, he had to move, apparently. So I'm glad, and just the only thing I would think is that 180 days seems kind of, you know, a little bit more excessive paperwork than they need. If you could extend it out to a year, I would encourage that. But I think you're going the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn. Anyone else like to speak in favor of the ordinance?
Tony Adams, I think it's a great ordinance, I think, I think you're on track. I just had a couple of clarifying questions. Food, does that include, like the food vendors, does that include like the orange guy and the corn people and the strawberry sellers and those? Or are those considered non-food vendors? Because that's all food.
This is not a time, I don't believe that we can answer questions, is it? Walt, or can you answer that?
Well, we can do it one of two ways, you can accept the question and I could respond, or I could respond now.
If you come forward, let's just go ahead and respond to that, it's a simple question.
We sort of separated it out as a commercial activity. You go to a grocery store, that's not a restaurant. You're buying oranges or whatever, that would be a temporary commercial use. These are food vendors where they are preparing the food for you to consume on the site. So that's where the difference would be.
So, like the guy who's selling oranges can only have 90 days for the whole year, and then he's done.
Yes.
And if you're selling corn or whatever. So that was what my clarification was. And that one, I'm a little bit, I don't know, it's kind of nice to have the orange guy selling oranges there, but, you know, I don't, I don't know what you guys feel about that, but.
Thank you, Walt.
That's my opinion on that. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in favor of?
I want to thank you all for, and Walt, for bringing this food cart to the forefront and kind of pushed it along with, without me nudging Jason or Rebecca or Gary or Paul to make this come through, because this is what I do. This is what Tracy and I do for a living. I was injured in 2013. I lost my job in 2014 because of the injuries. In fact, I just had my left shoulder repaired eight weeks ago today, or yesterday. And it's hard for somebody that's injured to find a job. So we created a job with a passion that I had for barbecue, to create a barbecue that I had for barbecue. Creating barbecue and creating food. So I wanted to say thank you to everybody that had a part in this and extending the ordinance so I don't have to look for a new place to go every 90 days. And I know that the people that we rent from, Hometown Furnishing people are just, they're just wonderful folks. They've been a great help. They've done a lot for us. And I just, they know that I appreciate them. I tell them every time I see them. And I want to let you guys know that Tracy and I greatly appreciate all y'all for pushing this through and taking sleepless nights into probably, hopefully, a little more sleep now because it is a big concern. Not everybody provides you a 50 amp circuit breaker to run what we need to run. And they did it just out of the kindness of their hearts. And so for us to go to a lower amperage, it would be hard for us to operate. So thank you so much, everybody. And like I said, we greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for your testimony. Anyone else speaking for? Is there anyone that would like to speak against the legislation? Okay. Seeing none, we'll now close the public testimony. And all further discussion will be limited to the council and city staff. Any discussion from council?
No.
Let's do it.
Something they should have done some time ago, probably, but...
Would you like to read the ordinance?
Ordinance Bill number 2016-6, ordinance number 2875, a bill for an ordinance amending section 16.19.110 of the City of Lebanon Development Code regulating roadside vendors.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 2875. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ordinance passes. Thanks again, Walt, for all your work on that. Appreciate it. Okay, next up is amending Lebanon Municipal Code 2.24, appointment, reappointment, and terms of planning commissioners. You're back.
Thank you again, Mayor, members of the city council. I put together a short little staff report, but I guess the bottom line is I want to save the city $1,500 every two years. For us to advertise our planning commission positions as a $1,500 proposition, we actually have to put an ad in the newspaper. And it gets rather expensive looking at budgeting. What we're suggesting is that in lieu of that, we can go ahead and use press releases, social media, however else, put it on the website to note to the public that these positions are open. The other change we'd like to make is that to have the appointments done for the next fiscal year. Currently, we haven't done by March or April, but to go ahead and have them done the next fiscal year. I think Linda was mentioning that this would tie in with the other boards that the city has. And this just is a way for us, frankly, to save some money. And also, I think there's logic in terms of tying in with the other boards as well.
Walt, is that pretty standard in other communities?
No, a lot of other communities suggest to, my experience, a press release, do something at a council meeting or a planning commission meeting is pretty low key. For saying again, the communities I worked on in the past, very few were over 1,000 in population, too. So you just kind of went to the coffee shop sometimes.
Yeah, and as you and I discussed on this, there's no law requiring us to have to put it in a newspaper, so that...
I mean, this is really another committee that has special duties and responsibilities. But by the same token, how you man it or put a woman on it, whatever, it doesn't, you know, there's no requirement.
You mean the state doesn't have a regulation for us?
I'm sorry. I feel remiss now.
That's a no-brainer.
I think it takes advantage of the current trends in the marketplace.
Okay, any other questions? City attorney, read the ordinance, please.
Ordinance Bill number 2016-7, ordinance number 2876, a bill for an ordinance amending sections 2.24025 and 2.24040 of the Lebanon Municipal Code concerning planning commission appointments, reappointments, and terms of office.
Move for approval. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 2876. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ordinance passes. Okay, next up, approval to advertise for bids for the new water treatment plant project. Ron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council. Standard procedure on advertising usually is to go through the consent calendar. Tonight, we decided that since these projects are so big, and there may be some other questions from council, to go ahead and present them as agenda items. So what you have before you here with the first one, there's actually two contracts that we're proposing. There'll be two bids that we're going out for. The first one here is for the actual water treatment plant itself, which includes the treatment plant, the intake, and also the pump station. And those are all combined together. And then the second one, which we can go over in the next agenda item, is all the utilities and the connecting utilities that go with that. Basically, it's taken us about two years to get here. It feels like forever, but we're here now. We're close in funds. If we were to, you know, with the engineers' estimates that are on both of these right now, if they were to come in at that, it would be really, really tight. But I think we can make that. The good news is, it sounds like there's a lot of folks ready to bid the project. We're hoping to see a good turnout on that. And with that, I can answer any questions you still may have with it.
And therefore make the price very competitive?
That's our hope. Yeah, I mean, there's so many variables on a project this big. If you think about it in these terms, you know, there's, you know, a 5% to 10% swing either way on 25 million is big, you know. So when you're budgeting, you know, that's a big jump. So we're hoping for the lower. And, you know, when you have a lot of competition, typically you would see that. But we won't know until we open the bids exactly what they are. We've kind of prepared for that. I guess one other thing to note is we're still waiting on our Corps of Engineers permit. The Corps is ready to issue the permit. NOAA Fisheries is still writing their biological opinion, and this is all for the intake. We don't expect any issues with that. However, they won't have their biological opinion done until June. So, but they haven't indicated any issues with it. There'll be some mitigation efforts that have to go with that. But that's one thing to note, and we've kind of accounted for that in our proposal as well, so.
Any questions?
Ron, if, as things move forward, what would be the timeframe for opening bids?
So for this project here, the first one, I believe it's May 17th is when we open bids for that. Yeah, we're going quick. We want to get it out. A project this size, it takes a contractor a lot of time to mobilize. We've got an in-water work period that begins July 15th. So we want to get them in the river so that we can work on that. And, you know, there's a certain timeframe. We have to have the cofferdams built so that they can continue to work on it all winter long and be out of the river.
How does that impact, if at all, the utilities side of it?
In terms of...
Their ability to look at it over a longer period of time before they submit their bid?
In my experience, you know, I mean, that's a good question. This is our biggest public works project. In my experience, most contractors typically look at your bids, you know, even on multi-million dollar projects, at the last week. This is different. They'll have a group of people. I've had people emailing me for probably over a year asking when this is going to come out, you know, different contractors. So they'll jump on it. You know, it's a good project and it's greenfield site. There's a lot of staging area. You know, somebody will want to put their name on it and be competitive, so.
Hope it's a good number.
I hope it's a good number, too.
This might be a good point, just to make sure the council's aware that we have a council meeting scheduled for May 25th, noon meeting to approve the contracts coming out of these bids.
Correct. Any other questions? With that, call for motion?
Move for approval. Good, please.
Can you second? Okay. It's been moved and seconded to approve to advertise for the bids for the new water treatment plant. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That's approved. And next up is approval to advertise for bids for the new water treatment plant off-site utilities.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the second of those projects. We broke the utilities out because typically you would have a different contracting group that would do the utilities versus the big building-type structures. So we broke all the raw water line, the domestic water line, and all the sanitary sewer, the storm drainage, all that out, and are putting that out in a separate package. And that's what this is for. Our estimate's right around 3.7 million. So I should note that UDL Engineering did the entire design for that, and our staff put together the specifications and the contract. So Brian and I have worked really close to get this thing put together and get it out. So we're comfortable in that. I can answer any questions you may have with that.
Okay, no questions? Call for motion?
I move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the advertised for bids for the treatment plant off-site utilities project. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That passes. Next up, number six, is rate adjustments for the water and sewer drainage utilities.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Every year, we look at inflationary costs with our utilities. We've done this over the course of the last, it's probably been the last four or five years, we've looked at this, probably four, where we've done an inflationary rate adjustment. We base that on a construction cost index with the engineering news record. We look at it over a year. There's an ordinance and you can see how that's defined, you know, the formula that we use for that. And starting through it, I'll just kind of work through the utilities. The water utility, basically, what those rates go for. The increase in that is for basically the extra staff costs, the additional fees that we have with administration, the different things. So essentially, one of the questions that was asked tonight was, do we just randomly pick this? And it's not randomly picked. And do we look at our budget and go, well, is there an increase in our budget? And the answer to that question is yes. I looked at both water, wastewater, and the storm drainage utilities. And the increase in staff costs, whether it be through PERS, whether it be materials and services, I believe in the water fund was, I want to say somewhere around 2.85%. The wastewater fund even more so. But what we're not accounting for is the additional capital. We've got a lot of capital that came up this year, you know, with the Albany Agreement coming up. There's another $1.2 million of unplanned capital, essentially, that's going to come out of our capital projects program. There's other projects that come up all the time that, you know, we have to do, especially in our sewer system. You know, we're finding more and more and more broken lines. As of right now, our small sewer program for this year is out of money. So any other sewer mains that come up, you know, we're keeping our fingers crossed, and that is our maintenance guys that are going to have to fix those because we don't have any money to contract that. If they're deep, you know, then you start digging into other capital projects. So we are cognizant of that. And when we're looking at this, it's not just an inflationary index to raise the inflationary, or to raise the increase in that. I guess the other thing to note in this, yes, it is a 3.1% increase in the rates. We try and get the projections as close as we can get them. I'll tell you, we're pretty conservative when we look at the revenues because we have no idea what the year's going to hold. Is it going to be a rainy year? Are we going to have less water usage this year? So in my opinion, we're lucky if we get within 5% of that, of those rates. Sometimes we're high. If we have a really dry year, same thing with wastewater, you know, they kind of trickle down. Storm drainage is the only one that's really, you know, it is what it is. But with the water rates and the sewer rates, there's a lot of variables that go in that. So, you know, when we're planning for stuff, we're looking at this as a 5% to 6% could swing either way. Don't know, you know, throughout the year. So we're pretty careful when we do that. So the 3.1%, yes, it does hit the rate pair, but it also gives us money to continue on. And hopefully, our capital programs can stay whole as we move forward. And I think, Mayor, you alluded to it, you know, in the planning phases, you know, we've planned this water treatment plant for 10 years. And I'm not sure we could have, you know, looking back, there probably could have been some additional planning that happened prior to that. But the rates themselves, you know, when you have to raise rates that much, hopefully, this eliminates that need, you know, these big projects that come up. When you have to raise rates 60% to handle capital projects, that's what we're trying to avoid. So we have a capital program that's set, and these inflationary rates keep that from happening. If we don't do that, then, let's say we skip this year, it's 3.1%. Let's skip, we skip next year and it's, let's say it's 3.1% again. So the following year, we're 6.2% behind. So then, where does that come from? It comes off your capital program. At some point, your capital program goes away, and all of a sudden, you're going backwards in your utility. And the next thing you know, you're raising rates 60% in order to pay for your capital projects. And so that's why staff presses for that, you know. But it is obviously up to this body to make that determination. So with that, I can answer any questions you may have about it. The resolutions are all there together. If you have any questions about any of the utility systems, we'd be more than happy to answer.
I thank you for your explanation on that and for addressing her comment. And this is, in my opinion, this is how the can gets kicked down the road. If you don't continue to adjust for inflation, if you don't continue to plan and prepare, that's how you end up with the situation that we were in four years ago.
Agreed.
And we have massive problems. So when previous councils choose not to increase rates, it's just kicking that can down the road. And so that's what's so important about this to me as a counselor. Thank you.
It's politically one of the least popular things we will ever do, and it's, you got to do it.
Yeah, thanks for your explanation on what happens if we don't do it, because that's the important part, I think.
We're living it right now.
Yeah.
And you guys do take a lot of it, but, you know, I get that part. But we as staff take a pretty good beating for this, too. You know, it's not something we enjoy doing either.
Yeah.
It's responsible, and it's good business, and it's good government.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, we got three resolutions. You want to read the first one?
Resolution number 2016-7, a resolution adopting the City of Lebanon's water rates.
Move for approval. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution 2016-7. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Resolution 2016-7 is approved. If you'll read the next resolution?
Resolution number 2016-8, resolution adopting the City of Lebanon's wastewater rates.
Move for approval. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution 2016-8. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Resolution 2016-8 is approved. Read the next resolution, please.
Resolution number 2016-9, resolution adopting the City of Lebanon's stormwater drainage utility rates.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution 2016-9. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. 2016-9 is approved. Thank you very much, Ron.
Thank you.
Okay, number seven, Viper Northwest, Gary Marks.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I believe you're aware of how the enterprise zone works, but for the members of the public who are here, I'll move through this quickly. Some years ago, the city created a enterprise zone in compliance with state regulations. At the time, the number of zones that could be created in the state were limited. And so when it came, when there were some opportunities in some of the neighboring communities like Albany and Sio, their only option was to ask us to expand our zone to include them. And the council was gracious to do that, recognizing that jobs created anywhere in the valley were good for the valley and for, by extension, for Lebanon. That's the case we have here today. That's the case we have here tonight. I should say, too, that in the next few years, these neighboring communities will be able to create their own enterprise zones. So this is a, these approvals that you go through for other communities are limited as far as we go into the future. But for now, we have a company in Albany called Viper Northwest. Albany wishes to extend their property rebate program to them. This has absolutely no impact on our revenue collections for the city of Lebanon. However, because it's our enterprise zone, city council approval is required, so I will request that of the city council.
Okay. Any questions? And motion?
Resolution.
Oh, I'm sorry. Read the resolution, please.
Resolution number 2016-10, a resolution approving an extended property tax abatement agreement between the city of Albany, a cosponsor of the South Saniam Enterprise Zone, and Viper Northwest, Inc.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution 2016-10. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The resolution is passed.
Gary, I know I'm not supposed to ask questions, but what does Viper Northwest do? I'm just curious. Do we know? Does anybody know?
I don't think I could be an expert to respond to that.
Just wanted, when they make Vipers.
You've got some on the...
Machine shop?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I like the name.
City manager's report, Gary.
Again, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, my report is in front of you, but I'll just hit a couple of the points. First, I want to say that I'm happy to report to you that our negotiations with our ASMA Union have come quickly to a happy conclusion. The two parties worked very well together. I'm very pleased with that. We came to terms. Both sides, I felt, were reasonable, and we just met yesterday to TA off all of the different provisions. We're going to have the totality of that agreement in front of you at the next council meeting for your approval. So again, that's something we just started in January, and I think it was just a really a great process for all of us. Then I want to also report to you, and let it be noted, that the first action plan item to be addressed to you after its approval is 11.2, which is an action plan calling for development of a strategy to address the obstacles of wetlands mitigation to our industrial lands development. I want to report to you, you've probably read this, but for the public's benefit, Walt and I are moving ahead with this action plan with kind of a two-pronged approach. We had a property owner who owns property on the south side of Oak, some industrial land, whose property was part of the council of government's delineation, wetlands delineation process that occurred a few years back. He decided to have his property redelineated because what we've, we're able to determine about the COGS analysis a few years ago was that it was simply a preliminary analysis in its approach. And because of that, it took an expansive view of defining wetlands. So what became delineated for him and for the other lands that were in that study are expansive. And what he, when he redelineated his property a few months ago, it reduced the number of acres that were identified truly as wetlands by about a third. So it, you know, when we're talking about $65,000 to $70,000 per acre credit to mitigate wetlands for development, that's a significant reduction. So we felt that the number-one priority for us in addressing this issue was first to define what the issue truly is. How many acres do we truly have? We have 280 acres of available bare, flat, industrial ground to be developed. About 200 of that right now is identified as needing wetlands mitigation. So, you know, if we had the same experiences as Mr. Brown did, we're talking something on the order of 60 or 70 acres may right now be identified as wetlands and truly maybe aren't. So we're moving ahead with that analysis because of the need to do it during wet seasons and during spring and fall. It's a process that needs to take place throughout this year. We'll have some results later in the year that we'll share with you when we're able. The other prong to our two-pronged approach is to develop a strategy, okay? Once we know how many acres have to be mitigated, when the developers come with their proposals, we need to have a plan in place where we know how we're going to address the expense of the wetlands mitigation. We had a meeting yesterday with a couple of representatives from Business Oregon, one of them from the Oregon Infrastructure Authority. They are keenly interested in working with the city of Lebanon. We're, Lebanon's kind of taking the lead on the west side of the state as far as this wetlands issue. They're very interested in working with us and seeing if there's a program or an approach or strategy that they can develop with maybe some state funding that would help us mitigate these issues. So other issues that we'll be looking at in this analysis for a strategy is the viability of, do we create our own wetlands mitigation bank? What's entailed with that? How much would that cost? Is it even realistic for us to do that? Another option is to perhaps partner with the city of Eugene. They've indicated to Walt that they're looking at expanding their existing mitigation bank. Maybe there's an opportunity there. We're not sure that we're in the same biozone as them and that the state, division of state lands would allow us to do that. But we're also looking at working, perhaps, I need to have a discussion with the city manager of Adair Village. They're looking at, they're kind of on the same track we are in trying to develop a strategy for addressing wetlands. There may be an opportunity for partnership there. So we're kind of going through an inventory of what our options are in a quest to develop a policy or a strategy that next time we have a proposal come our way to develop some of our industrial land with some jobs attached to it, maybe we'll have a quicker ready response for them. So it's probably at least a year-long process, but I'll keep you posted as we go along. Happy to also report to you, and this will be the final item, the budget that you'll receive here in about a month is going to look different to you. I promised you a different format last year, and indeed, you're going to get it. The font will be significantly bigger. It'll have a different, it'll be a horizontally-oriented presentation rather than the portrait style. I think it's going to be much easier for most people to read and therefore understand. So I'm looking forward to getting your reaction to that when you get the document. With that, if there are any questions about anything I've discussed here or other items of the city business, I would be happy to respond.
Gary, I have a question around the wetlands. How about the commissioners? Are they on board with any of the action that's proposed or might take place?
It's been several weeks since I talked with the commissioners. Who did I talk to?
Will Tucker.
Yeah, Will. I talked to Will. Will has some ideas, and indeed, I think that's one of the options we're going to be vetting out. I'm not sure, I'm not sure he's, well, he's not been able to fully help me understand how they could participate, so I'm looking forward to further discussions with him and maybe the other commissioners, but I know he...
How about dollars?
That's what it comes down to. I know they've got a lot of money in their street fund, and I think he's got some ideas of some loan processes that...
Who wants to loan us the money?
That money can be paid back. But anyway, I need to talk to Will more about that, but I know he is indeed very interested and concerned about this issue because it's a county-wide issue. It's actually a mid-valley-wide issue, and I think you know he's very interested in economic development, and I think we've got a good partnership there.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, seen that. Any items from council?
Okay. Oh, also, I need to, yeah, I'm sorry, I need to follow up with one item. The Oregon Supreme Court recently came down with a, an adverse decision for municipalities throughout the state as far as liability. I've asked Trey to be prepared to address it to you. I wanted to make sure you are all aware of what this decision's about. So Trey, why don't you explain?
So I have, normally have great respect for the Oregon Supreme Court, but sometimes they issue a decision that just makes, I think, most of us lawyers shake their heads. There was a case out of Portland. It's called Johnson versus Gibson. Interesting fact scenario, and I didn't know this happened. We had a blind jogger up in Portland that was jogging through a park and stepped in a hole and got injured. And the hole had been left there because they were fixing a sprinkler head. So we have a statute in Oregon that says, when you're in this kind of a recreational thing, the municipality itself has immunity. So they didn't sue the city of Portland. They sued the parks manager that managed the park and the actual individual city worker that dug the hole and was going back to get the spigot to, or the sprinkler to put on the, put on the water line. All along this, and of course, we also have a statute in Oregon that says that if an individual employee, agent of the city, or municipality, county, state, it doesn't matter, is acting within the course and scope of their employment duties, then the municipality, county, or state has a statutory obligation to step in to defend and indemnify this person. So it was basically an end run around the municipal immunity. They went after the individuals. The individuals, of course, the city of Portland thus had to step up and defend them, pay to defend them, and ultimately pay the damages. Circuit court said, yeah, the statute doesn't say anything about the individuals. Went all the way up to the Supreme Court, and the Supreme Court agreed. And to their credit a little bit, they said, listen, we can only interpret what's written. The legislature didn't write immunity for municipalities and their agents and their employees. And they said, there's other instances in which this, in which the legislature has done that. So the implication is obviously within the city parks, the recreation areas of the city. And again, where the people taking the lead on this are obviously the insurance companies. CCIS has taken the lead on educating not only the cities, but making recommendations as to what the city can do to minimize the risk. Obviously, we're going to see an increase in suits where they don't sue the city, they sue the individual employees, which really is the same as suing the city based on their duty to indemnify. The city is actively taking some steps of the, and going through the recommendations of CCIS, of doing an inventory, of looking at potentials for, you know, closing off outdated equipment or identifying potential hazard situations, posting, making additional postings of use at your own risk, that kind of stuff, to the extent those are enforceable. The potential exists to have different hours for some of the parks, closing down the hours, closing down the parks. All of this as a reasonable effort to respond to the Supreme Court decision. Now, there will be an active campaign led by the League of Oregon Cities to change the law in the next legislative session, so we'll just have to see what happens before then. I find it hard to believe that faced with this issue, that the legislature won't fix it fairly quickly. But if you see anything going on in the parks, that's, could be why.
Was the individual by themselves?
I think they had a guide dog with them. Guide dog was able to go around the hole.
Guide was able to go around, but the blind person. Can the city countersue?
Well, of course. You can sue for anything. I didn't say you'd win. Not sure what they'd countersue for.
Any other comments from council? Okay, we have another opportunity for citizens to comment. Anybody like to speak before council?
I'm probably naive on the wetlands, wetlands thing, but it does seem to me like that's primarily the responsibility of the owner and who might want to develop the land. I don't see, you know, I mean, I'm sure you have an overall plan, but it doesn't seem like it's something you necessarily have to, city has to be responsible for paying for, I wouldn't think. And there, you like, you comment about the trees, you know, the Arbor Day and all that. Unfortunately, when you converted that land from industrial to mixed use, it became an attractive thing for the investor to come in, clean it all off, took off a bunch of trees that people used to like to look at. Now, it's a private property. The guy's got the right to do that, but that was a kind of a consequence of changing the type of use, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Comment in regards to Arbor Day. Lebanon Community Foundation at Tito Lake Park plants trees every year during Arbor Day.
Oh, very good, good. Anyone else?
Three or four.
Okay, seen that. Items from the press? Any questions, Matt?
Wake up.
At that, the meeting is adjourned.